Yes, I'm green.
Well, I think I have the wrong numbers for you, Anna. Thank you. Sorry, everybody. I hate to waste everybody's time. I was waiting on our delivery and I came in late.
I was literally unloading garden boxes about five minutes. All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order at 4:40 or 5:40 roll call, please. Oh, sorry, sorry. Are you ready, Hector?
I'm ready.
Maybe I'm jumping the gun a little bit. When you're ready, Hector.
Counselor Penamor.
Here.
Counselor Greider.
Here.
Counselor Prestizo.
Here.
Counselor Byers. Counselor Perry Miller.
Here.
Mayor Arisfod.
Here.
Mayor Gavacar.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is discussion about council rules. Steph?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you for all of you being here so we can hopefully make a little more progress. The last time we met about a month ago on these proposed council rules revisions, we got to this place, which is the, on the new version, it's the top of page six. And we got through G, as you can see on the screen there. And then I, we got down to the area where we talked about public participation. Now, what we agreed last time was that we would just kind of keep going forward and not go back and make sure we, I've captured everything accurately. And that's what I've done. I took the, my notes and the video of our last meeting and I went back over what we discussed then and I made the changes that seemed like what you were wanting to see changed. But we're just going to move forward and we're only going to come back and look at those at the very end when we get everything done. Hopefully, we can get through it pretty quickly that way. The, as I say, we got through G on this top of page six. And then at that point, I handed out a series of questions about public participation. It seemed a little easier to talk about trying to answer those questions rather than getting bogged down in actual, in words that will end up being used. What I'm trying to do is capture the concepts that you're interested in with respect to these questions. And you all should have these. It's got a, yes, it's the top right-hand corner. It says the 3624 meeting. That was our previous meeting. These are the same questions. So I'd like to just kind of start through these questions and solicit, elicit from you comments you have about how you think these questions should be answered. So the first one has, is really about public input via online testimony on agenda items at our council regular meetings. We have, I think you know how we've handled these in the past. And this is asking, do we want to make any changes to that? And then I've got a list of four considerations to kind of think about there. So rather than me talking for a minute, I think maybe I'll give you a couple of minutes just to read through that and, and then see what comments you might have. Let me just focus on number one and the parts of it now. So in the past, as you know, we've asked people who want to speak at a council meeting to get online and get a speaker request form and hand that in ahead of the meeting. But we've also provided the speaker request forms here. In the hybrid rules that you adopted back a couple of years ago, we asked that if you wanted to, if the person wanted to testify in person, excuse me, online, that they let us know by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting so that we would have time to kind of make arrangements to make that possible. And we do now have to allow, if we're going to allow any public testimony in person, we have to allow public testimony online. So kind of wrestling with that new change in Oregon open meetings laws, we're trying to figure out how to handle this. Part of the issue is about four o'clock, our recorder starts coming over here to set up the meeting and isn't there to get an online, to receive a speaker request form online. And so it presents a little bit of a logistical problem. And then also even at the meetings, if some, if we allow somebody to sign up online at the meeting, we end up with either somebody having to run back and forth to the big console back up to here, or we have two people here. And that, of course, adds costs and some complications. So just looking for thoughts on how how you think it'd be best to handle this.
Counselor Penamor.
Thank you. I remember back in the day when, you know, there was a lot of Zoom bombing, right? And the thing is, I, you know, I definitely, we support the idea of online participation to encourage, you know, real participation, but, you know, not to just make it easy for people to take advantage. So, you know, I think it's reasonable, when people are here, you know, they're people, we can see them, they're kind of, they're identifying themselves by just simply being there physically in our presence. Whereas with people online, they could, you know, they could be anybody. And we also don't have any visual sense of them. So, you know, to have the requirements that this kind of anonymous person to allow a request form, to me is reasonable. To be more stringent for the people online, you know, especially, and then I'm wondering about the accommodations thing, where making, another great thing about online is folks who have physical difficulty actually getting here can participate online. So that's kind of the accommodations that we're required to make. So I almost feel like if it's a person who is participating online because of accommodation reasons, it's, it's definitely very high, you know, on my list of making it easier for that person. But just to have like anonymous, you know, people just kind of having, to me, I don't feel like they, they need to have the same accessibility as people who come here, unless it's a case of that accommodation. So that's where I'm coming from.
Counselor Byers?
Um, I think it's about how reasonable it is to think that we might be able to shut now from this space. And it might not be able to, but
Yeah, we need, we need input from Hector on this.
Counselor Byers, thank you. Your question is how reasonable it would be for the city reporter to continue checking their email while prepping for, it would just be part of the process when setting up. Currently Outlook, the way it's set up is that you have full access to Outlook on our desktops. When we log in here, we log in through the browser and it does not allow all access to all email accounts, only the primary email account. But I'm sure that's only a IT request to have that access. So I, I can see it being part of the process as we begin setting up to continue checking emails. In fact, right now, we could do that, but unfortunately cannot.
So if I could follow up, Hector, I mean, Mayor, could we have it so that it works online just like it does for a person here? That is, if they come in at the beginning of the meeting and fill out a speaker request form, they can speak in person, do the same per person online? Do we have that?
Well, in fact, with the new website, we have that capability. It's called forms. And we use forms for contact us or submitting code compliance violations. So what we could do with council meetings is have a form available where people put in their name, first, last name, address, and perhaps a item they want to address, and then submit that, then that form gets put together and submitted to an email, to email account that I could either check here or back in the office. So it would be the same as filling out a form here, where they come in and fill it out in those fields to fill out. So we could, we could mimic that exact same scenario for a public request online.
And do it at 6:45?
I'm sorry?
And do it at 6:45, right at the beginning of the meeting?
It could be available before. It would, it would be live on the website. It would just live there. It could be part of the city council sub tab on the website. Oh, is that your question?
Yes.
Yes, it can be checked in real time. Correct.
Okay, so we could do it both at the beginning of the meeting or as we have done with in-person testimony at the beginning of a, just before an agenda item is coming up.
Well, typically what we do is I get the speaker request forms after the beginning of the meeting and, and they're here. So when we get to the agenda item, I know that there's one there, but I don't, I don't ask for them as we go through the agenda. Yeah, so they would, I mean, what we have been doing ad hoc is collect, is collecting them and making last call both live and online at item number two, item number, well, the one that's called speakers heard on non-agenda items. So that's, that's been the last point at which I was taking them. And I just want to add that it seems, it seems reasonable to do, to continue to do that and take a moment at that point to let Hector check the emails for speaker request forms. And then I would just go through the ones that I have live and then hand it to you to call out the ones that are online or the city recorder. That's one possible, that's, it's sort of what we're doing now, but it would be informed by the forms that you're talking about moving forward. And that seems to be working. That, that's just one, one possible. If, if the council decides they want to go with the format that we're using now, where it's speakers heard on non-agenda items and speakers heard on agenda items, which I know that there's other cities that are doing things differently that I think is going to come up as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to, thank you. I just want, wait till you say my name. One thing I just wanted to add that I really like about the way you explained it, well, two things. One is it's after any additions or corrections to the agenda. So people have a chance to know if the agenda gets modified before. So the last call comes after that on our agenda. I like that. The other thing I think is, I think it's a good idea to keep the rules fairly, fairly strict because we can always relax them, right? So people don't have to, you know, demand their rights under the rules. We can try to, you know, keep everything orderly and having all the speaker request forms in by the point in the agenda that the mayor suggested. Speakers heard on non-agenda items, for non-agenda and agenda, and then just say that's it. And if there's extenuating situation, we can relax the rules and allow people to testify. So that's, that's where I'm.
Counselor Prestizo?
Yeah, I just want to emphasize, I think it's important that, especially for the folks that are online, because they're not necessarily monitoring them like here can come up and talk to Hector or something that it is clear that this is the last time. And then it also seems like we need to give them enough time to find the form, fill it out and submit it. So if we're going to pause, we should consider how long is a reasonable pause to allow people to do that.
I just want to say what I was suggesting didn't suggest that they could be sending in the forms when I'm calling for the forms. Or that they would have from the beginning of the meeting to that point to submit. And, and, and so you're right, it's confusing to say the last call for forms would be, but, but I think that that would be a really overly long pause and it would be subjective to somebody's criticism and all kinds of things. So I would say once we get to item number five, we're not taking any more forms.
So, so then my only concern is just making sure that people are aware of this, that can also become a critique of the process.
Yeah, yeah.
And what's the best way to do that?
Good point.
Just to piggyback on what Dave's saying, I think that, you know, the person online has, has found the Zoom link, right? So to have the form right there with the Zoom link, and if you're, if you want to say anything, this is the form, you know, right there together, that would give them what I think you're looking for, Dave.
If the form is right there, I'm not sure how that would level.
The Google form with the link? Yeah. Sorry.
I mean, there's different ways you can do it. But ways you can do it, I'm just not sure how we're planning to do it. I just think it could become a real pain in the neck if, and some people critique if we don't, you know, do the due diligence to make it as clear and obvious, here's the form and, and you have until this point to actually get it turned in.
I think we have to do that anyway, whether we're doing it live or, I mean, it's just.
But here, right, if there's people here, they're hearing it. If someone comes in slightly late to a meeting and they don't hear that this has happened, you know, I'm, I'm just being the devil's advocate in a major way.
Totally get that. So I'm going to go with Counselor Perry Miller and then Counselor Greider.
It would be really nice and probably pretty easy to include the link on our agenda, just along with the Zoom link. I mean, especially if it's a, like that kind of a link, it should be pretty easy. And then it would be something that people would have right in front of them on the agenda.
A link to the form?
Yeah, like just right here. But I don't know if that's
It's possible.
Reasonable.
Oh.
Possible, reasonable.
Possible and reasonable are two distinctly different things. And we don't want to, we don't, I know that we can simplify this to the greatest degree for staff handling as well. Of Counselor Greider and then Counselor Byers.
So it seems it would be simpler. I, and I might be missing something though. Maybe it's because of the in-person difference, but can we not just set a time? It seems like that would make it, because I don't know if people will, you know, at what point in the agenda do you get to? It seems like it would just be clear.
Time is less arbitrary, right?
Time, but then maybe the reason we're not is because folks that are here in person might, if that doesn't work for, it gives them a environment could be earlier than necessary if we set a time, but it seems like for staff. And I guess for people who maybe are new to the, that way it could just even be put right there on the information.
Dave?
To go far away to Counselor Prestizo's comment about advising ahead of time what the rules are so they don't complain later. But we do have, at the, at the top of the agendas right now, we do have a little advisory to the, to anybody looking at that, and we can include a statement in there that reflects what you've just been talking about. And that would at least, we still might have people not be happy, but.
You know, I just think we have to go out of our way to make it as clear as we can, and that would be one great way to do it.
Just to put it on the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if you
Let me go to, sorry, go ahead, Counselor Greider, and then I'm going to go to Counselor Byers, and then I'll come back to you, Counselor Penamor.
I think just to follow, I don't know how we would give those instructions. If, I mean, I guess we could just say, once we get to this point of the agenda, but that's just so subject to change.
I, I'm happy to do that at the, at the opening after, right after roll call is just, just to, just to announce how to submit your form. I think that's really a thoughtful input. Counselor Byers?
Um, yeah, to further, I think it'd be important to go and to judge the agenda. And then also wherever there's a Zoom link, just a speaker submission form with listed right beside it. You know, we've got a Zoom link in the agenda, but I try to miss and wait to see if people are finding their place.
I, I think what I'd like to do now is maybe just, Counsel Penamor, and then just wrap this piece up with a suggestion, because these are council rules that are subject to change without a lot of legislation, you know, so, and without a lot of hoopla. So we can, we can test drive something for a while, and if it works, great. And if it's, if it's workable for the staff, great. But if not, we can always adjust it. Counselor Penamor?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest like a little three-minute video. It's like, you know, how to attend a council meeting and just kind of walk people through it. Your first council meeting, here's what to expect.
Yeah.
How to participate. I like the views.
All right. So and it, it looks like everybody's sort of gravitating to this idea that at some point in the agenda, we close picking submission forms and that we make that clear on the top of the agenda. And, and we're consistent for both online. And is that enough information for now to build something? And Hector, we would, of course, welcome your input on how this is going. Because we don't want you running back from the board to, you know, that's just not reasonable. That would, that would fall under the not reasonable.
And I hurt my knee recently, so that would also be not preferable.
What's that?
Sorry, bad time for a joke. I've been taking notes.
Okay, I missed it. I think it was.
I have different needs.
Yeah.
I've been taking notes, so I will provide them with my feedback to.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Um, just because I, I feel like I'm hearing two different things. My suggestion would be that it be an item on the agenda rather than attached to a specific time, because if our meeting starts late or early, it's going to be easier to remember if it's actually on there.
We can put it in the order of business to ask for submissions to be submitted or is that what you're saying?
Yes, rather than a specific time on the clock.
Now, I do want to ask, since we're on this topic, I do want to ask if the council wants to consider what Medford does is they actually carve out a time for all speakers at once. They, there's a period of time, I don't know what it is, but it is a speakers heard time. And other than a public hearing, which requires a hearing, it's the time where everybody can come to the agenda and speak for the amount of time given to each person. And, and they, they have a specific amount of time that they take speakers. So once that time is exhausted. But even a variation of that. Does anybody want to talk about that or consider that, Counselor Perry Miller?
Well, just, so it's a 30-minute chunk of time. They have it set sort of where our non-agenda items is. So it's at the very beginning of the meeting. And like you said, anyone who wants to speak about any item on the agenda would speak about it there. So it could be non-agenda items, but it could also be any agenda item that's coming up later. So rather than our recorder having to sift through online and in-person speaker request forms in real time, it would be more isolated. And then it would also be an opportunity to not have us forget or lose speaker request forms in real time, which has happened to me. So it's just another option. And I think there's definite pros and cons, and I'm not necessarily leaning either way, but it is definitely efficient for them. So.
Counselor Greider?
You have to leave the 30 minutes open even if someone doesn't, like what if someone wanted to come in at the end? Like the last 25 minutes of that time, thinking that that was the time that was available?
I don't know.
But you didn't have anyone there in the beginning? Does that make sense? Am I saying that in a way that makes sense? If it, would we shorten it if there, if nobody was there and end up being only five minutes? They're already like pretty long, so I don't know if it.
Yeah, I mean, we sit there for 30.
It would be, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Perry Miller.
My understanding is that it's an item on the agenda. So if you are there for that item, you get in the queue, but it's not like a 30 chunk, 30-minute chunk of time that's set in every meeting, if that makes sense.
So we just move on if there isn't anyone there?
Yeah. Yes, and I believe it's two minutes per person and something like five minutes per organization. So, I mean, they have very specific time constraints, but considering how large their city is, how many people they have, I think that that's just what they settled on. So.
So the opportunity here would be to modify, modify what seems like the, the consistent thing would be to just have one time when we take speakers, but we could modify that in any way. We could say we'll take all speakers that sign up and not limit it to 30 minutes. Keep the three minutes that we already give instead of reducing it to two and five. You know, so if, I guess what I'm asking is, does the council want to consider just one time period for speaker requests? Or do we want to continue to do what we've been doing all along? I've been to Medford and it is really efficient, and I really feel like everybody gets heard as well. So Counselor Penamor?
I do like that idea. I also like that idea from the point of view, if I'm coming in and testifying on something that's late in the agenda, I don't know when I'm going home. I might try to time it late so I don't have to sit through the whole meeting. If that kind of, I think that would be really efficient for folks who maybe can't spend the whole two hours, three hours at a council meeting. So I, I really like that idea. I would just, I just want to add, as far as, you know, if there's a lot of people or I, I do like the, the idea that being, you know, from Robert's rules up to the chair's discretion. We got a lot of people tonight, so I'm going to limit you to two minutes versus three minutes. I like that, the chair having discretion. If they're, in the case where there might be a lot of people.
Well, what we do now is three to five minutes.
But it's up to
I, Counselor Prestizo?
Just for clarification, so this means even if there's a public hearing, they would make their comments?
No, no, the, the exception is public hearings, which always require, which is mandated by law, like. Counselor Greider?
Again, just to clarify, so if no one spoke up at that time on the agenda, we would move on.
Your opportunity, that's right. As it is now, if any item is open and closed, they still miss their opportunities. So. But we could put But we could put it, you know. As, as I think it was you that said that we could put it still as number, item number five, so it's not like we, we would be doing it at six forty-eight, you know what I mean? Um, yeah, yeah. Council Perry Miller?
Thank you, I think that with any of these changes, it'll definitely be a learning curve for us and for the community, so I think it will just depend on us to make sure we're. You know, giving people grace, of course, as this gets to be something that everybody understands, but. Um. But yeah, I mean, it would be a change. But again, it is. Pretty efficient as far as how their meetings are able to run, so.
Well, I want to give um Dave some direction on this, so um I'm just going to go through and ask each one of you if you prefer the multi. Opportunity or the single opportunity, and then we can suss that out more as we go, so I'm going to start with you, uh, Council Perry Miller.
I kind of like the idea of at least continuing to think about this, since this is just an idea brought up tonight. Um, I like the idea of, like, uh, Councilor Penamorif said, people being able to show up at a specific time and not having to wait for two hours or longer. For their agenda items, so just for that reason alone, I think I'm. I'm open to both options, but I think it would be interesting to explore the way that Medford does it.
Council Byers?
I know. I, again, I notice it's. So much more efficient for the third six seconds time, but also I, I was saying here that people have changed their input based on what they heard from the presentation recognition. And I really think it's valuable to allow that as well, so.
Council Prestizo?
Um, well, I'm leaning towards the Medford model, um. But I am open to. You know, another way of doing it, I just think, again, we need to be really clear about communicating how it works, because some people are used to, well, it's. What I want to talk about isn't till later in the agenda, so I'll wait and, you know, jump in later, so as long as we're communicating whatever we're doing, and then. Work through the learning curve.
Great. Council Greider?
I agree and second with everything that Council said, thinking of the way the process actually works during that evening. Is another piece that I am still working through, because I also like to keep. Things sort of like in there, you know, in the context that they're in at that time. It, my brain, it's like, okay, we're talking about this now, then we're moving to the next, so like. To keep things together, and that way on an agenda works for me, I, but I, I see it as an efficient way, so.
Thank you, Council Penamorif?
I'm ready to pilot the Medford style um at the beginning of the meeting now. Just with the understanding that if somebody were to come in late and say, oh, I thought I could speak on something, you can always relax the rooms. Um, so I, I'd, I'd like to try Medford. Style.
Council Byers? And, and which, to, to that point, I would weigh in that I support uh piloting the Medford model for a lot of those reasons. So I think it's going to really make a much more efficient situation for both live and online, for both people who come to the meeting and those who are zooming in. Um, to uh, to be able to participate. Um, and, and like I said, you know, um, like, what's really important to remember too is that some of the most. Some of the most important items that we um consider here are in the form of a public hearing, and the law makes it really clear that. You know, we open up a public hearing for the purpose of, of listening, uh, again, you know, a second time, so. Um. Yeah, I, I support the idea of piloting the. The model, and I, I do hope that whatever we decide tonight, that we're able to give Dave some direction to work on, because we don't, uh, I, to Dave's earlier point, we, we want to. Um, give some. So does anybody object to just giving this uh a, a try, is there objection to that? I think you have consent to, to write it up.
Right, I'll write it up that way, and, and you can look at it, and you'll have time to think about it.
Exactly.
Before it comes back to you.
And we'll have time to think out about it before we even adopt it, so, I mean, there's a lot more conversation to happen before adoption comes, so it looks weird. And, and I would also invite anybody who's interested, really deeply interested in it, that, that you can check out a Medford. I've been to several Medford meetings, I've testified at Medford meetings, and I find it just as. Just as good, but, but very convenient and very efficient, yeah.
Uh, Mayor, to Council Byers' point, though, with respect to item number two, it. Uh, one, and then Roman numeral III. Uh. We have been pretty flexible in the past, and I think what I hear you saying is. Don't be so flexible now, set it, write it up so there is a set time. Um, and. That people need to make that time.
Or a set place on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, time, time is so hard when.
Yeah, yeah, it didn't mean time, but I said. Um. We don't, we don't go back and say, well, is there anybody else now that we're?
Yeah.
Uh, fifty minutes into the meeting.
Agreed.
Okay.
Easy to do, Council.
Although that would be great, you know how sometimes we have time uh estimations of certain things? If, if an agenda could be written with, you know, time, you know, if everything goes perfectly, here's the time to expect this, that, and the other thing. That would be, that's a gold standard for, for an agenda for me, just wanted to put that out there.
Let's uh try one gold standard. You're scaring me over there. All right.
Okay, moving on to, uh, probably a quick one here, number two, um, when we are having online participation. Are, are we going to shut off the chat and Q and A uh provision that Zoom allows for?
Councilor Penamorif?
So the one good thing about chat is when people can't hear or technical difficulties, they have the ability to communicate, but I've been. In webinars where that, that all, the only person you can talk to is the host. So you can't disrupt the meeting, you can just say, I can't hear, or so-and-so's microphone isn't working, whatever, so. Having chat, but only for the online folks to be able to communicate with, you know, a single person who's the, who would handle any technical difficulties. Or who might be able to communicate to the chair if there was something that, that needed to be communicated. We just want to eliminate the disruption, right?
Seems. It seems like that's sort of an additional burden on the chair who's already got her mind on several things at one time.
It wouldn't be, it would be the um.
The host.
Yeah, okay.
So the Zoom host would just see something in chat that says, hey, nobody's audible or something, uh, technical difficulties.
And can.
And they would be able.
Can the chat function be limited to one? To you, Hector?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I've seen it.
Okay.
We all have answered for you, Hector.
We're, we're all Zoom experts.
Figure out which mic works, um, so the Zoom chat function can be disabled completely.
Well, we want to partially disable it, we, we want to have it come just to you, not to anybody else.
I'm only partially paying attention. Uh, yes, we, like, there are multiple uh settings that we can use there, so. Yeah.
That's a webinar, so like, we would be able to use.
So for the purpose of technical difficulties only, chat would be left open to the host, does that, would that work for you?
Yes, it can work, yes.
Yeah, or work for the host?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Good. Uh, number three, in the course of a meeting, should the elected officials um. Uh. Be able to participate by electronic means. Um. With people that can't. That others can't see. In other words. Um. If you're, if you, if you are up here, and yeah, you're, you're uh having a, a, an email interchange with somebody. Is that okay? Um, and it. Yeah, I, I mean, I think the answer is pretty clear that that. This is supposed to be a public meeting, and, and not one where somebody gets a private opportunity to have input.
To staff, to anybody on the dais, to anybody who's, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, to anybody who's participating in the meeting, liaisons, anybody, yeah. I'm sorry, Council, Council Byer?
Um, I would like to point out, at least. There was one instance where you were out of town. And had input to provide, even though I was chairing the meeting and I called you and put you on speakerphone. And if everyone in the room could hear you, and had I held my mic up, I'm sure it would have. Been very audible for anyone in Zoom as well. I'm wondering if we want to hold any sort of provision like that to just be very, very intentional with the articulation of this rule. Um, because in that case, it wasn't a private conversation at all, and it, you know. Uh, I believe what was happening was your Zoom was malfunctioning.
Yeah, and our rules already allow us to op- uh, to participate by telephone.
Right.
Um, so I think that falls under that rule.
Okay, I, I just don't want us undoing that inadvertently in any way.
Yeah, that, uh, number six on this list kind of gets to that with respect to executive sessions, and that, that can be a problem where. We, we don't know whether somebody online who's participating, whether a counselor online is participating in executive session. Whether anybody else is in the room at the time when it's supposed to be only. Elected officials. And it's of course hard to police, but. Um, at least it seems like there needs to be a rule.
Yeah, Council, uh, you had your hand up, Council Penamorif, and then I'll go to Council Greider.
Did I?
Yeah, you did, a few minutes ago, while you were giggling.
During, well, I was laughing because I was remembering when we first went on Zoom. And you have family members going back and say like, be quiet, I'm in an executive session. Um, I, yeah, I think, I think the fact that they can't hear, you know, if you have earphones. I think it's just one of those kind of honor system things where you just, to, to the extent possible. You um make sure that the information stays private, and uh earphones are a great way to do that, because the people, other people in your household. Um, who may not appreciate being kicked out of the room entirely, uh, and can't hear.
Council Greider?
Um, this is of interest to me, number three, um, specifically right now, because my partner just texted me and said that our son. Uh, he had to call poison control because he took, anyways, he got him some medication, so um, everything's fine, but. Um, this doesn't specify that we're just talking about. Council biz, like. Meeting topics, right, so I'm curious, like, if you, because it. I mean, maybe that's implied, maybe it's not, I mean, not that you should be talking to anyone about anything, but it doesn't specifically say. Um. It doesn't really, it's not clear. That you're right, that you're discussing something related to that meeting that you're in, or the, the, the agenda topic that we're on. Versus like, a family member is messaging you about something, and does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, so what you're asking for is to add language that clarifies that this is for meeting agenda items only.
Because. Though I'm not trying to open it up to say like, but let's all text our family members while we're here, but in case of.
I mean, I, I also have a delicate family situation where I have my phone ready in case there's an emergency, so. Um. We're not talking about family emergencies or family urgent matters, we're talking about. Yeah, you know, again, it's the honor system. Um, here as well, uh, that, that. Well, we understand that it's not just chitty-chatty with our family, it's um urgent matters coming across, is the exception.
Yeah, maybe just something around, I just was expecting to see that in that question, like something about. A little more detail on. What you're discussing with other people, but.
Okay, I can take a shot at that. And then, and then on the. However, I, I, on the, on the item six, when we're talking about an executive session. I think it needs to be even tighter.
Sure.
Um. Because uh. There is the, there is the risk that it, it. Becomes public.
It, it, um. Right, there's always a risk that it becomes public, a, a counselor can walk out the door, make it public, and then they're subject to whatever the rules are. But I do think there is um maybe some room for language that any online participation, Zoom participation in an executive session requires headphones. Um. For the purpose of. Privacy.
Yeah, I, I would just add, to the extent reasonable, a person might not have headphones that are working.
Yeah, to the extent reasonable, yeah, that's really good language.
Dave had a say about that, too.
Uh, Council Prestizo? What do you mean by that?
People are actually interested.
Well, no, you know, I mean, it's like if I home at an executive session and honestly, and then I have input. Right, that headphone, that can keep anyone else in working very much.
Yeah, that's true.
So they kind of know, I'm sure they know what about, I don't know, I guess. They just forgot to spend so much time without the option for them using an executive session, I almost said. They're always in person certification, and if you can't make it, you have to, you know, submit whatever promise or stuff that everybody makes. The issue being for.
I, I just want to say I disagree with that, from the standpoint that I think executives, yeah. Um, I mean, some of us travel on business, I travel a lot on business, and I, I don't want to miss key items, um. Because I travel on business, but what I, what I would say, um. Is that for. You know, all this time, we have a responsibility to executive session, and I don't think that changes when we're online. And so the responsibility being that um we make sure that we're, and like maybe a declaration, or maybe, you know, at the beginning of the. Meeting, anybody online, are you in a private, you know, something, a measure of some kind, I see reasonable, but I, I think.
Well, that's kind of what I would say.
Okay. Before we jump all against.
Yeah. Um, it's just like you do, you know, initiate the honor system or whatever, it's what we do. And then you have to trust, but it's just like you said, you could walk out, the fear is felt, well. Rather than trying to go down the path, like, you need to have this, you need to have that, you know, this.
Council Penamorif?
Yeah, I was just going to combine the lines, you know, uh, to um. Ensure, you know, the, the counselor online has the responsibility to ensure privacy to a reasonable extent.
I, I would drop the reasonable expense, yeah, I would just ensure privacy, yeah, because I think that's the. That's the standard.
Yeah, because my concern would also be about quorum, I would not always form it.
Council Byers, and then Dave?
Would it be acceptable to include that additional piece of language into the opening script for executive session that is asking people to clear the room and?
Yeah, maybe we don't need it in the rules, we need to add that to the script.
Um, or both, and um, yeah, that's what I meant by declaration, I think that's how we get. If we all know. Council Penamorif?
It occurs to me, it's not just us, right, we could have an attorney, a consultant, somebody also.
Right.
Uh, online. It's part of executive.
Any other comments on this? All right, Dave?
Um, I think we have. Uh, item number four, we actually addressed last time, and I'll have some language to uh propose. Uh, we'll. Finish this whole process and come back, um, so I don't think we need to look at number four. Um, number five. Um. I think the answer. For that is, is yes, because we have to allow online participation anyway.
Right.
Under, under state law. Uh. Then we answered six already, number seven. Um. Should study sessions always be held where online observation is available? Uh. That too gets to uh. The uh, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're going, if we have a study session and we're going to allow. the, uh, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're going, if we have a study session and we're going to allow in-person testimony, we have to allow online testimony. But there were times, and we had one here just recently, I can't remember what it was, where we were in another building. And, um, and it, it seemed like one of those situations where a council just needed to sort of, sort of get together and talk about something. And I don't know whether in that case, whether we allowed any public participation. We're not required to allow public participation.
At any meeting. And it's not common for us to, um, take public participation in a, um, in a study session. And that's not the same as us exercising our right to allow someone to participate from the dais. So there have been times where we've, where we've said, you know, commission or so and so, you will be joining us in the study session.
Right.
But we don't typically take, because the, it presumably the item in the study session ends up on the agenda and gives the public the opportunity to speak on it at that time. Um, that's just been the common practice. I, and, um, but it's, I just, I'm laying out the baseline for anybody to. Counselor Byers?
Well, I'm actually asking a clarifying question. So number seven on the paper says, should study sessions always be held where online observation is available? But what I'm hearing you ask is something different and it's really more, should online participation be allowed? And, um, yeah, I, I'm just wanting to get a little clarification on what you really would like direction on, uh, what's on the paper or what, what you're asking.
Ignore what's on papers.
Okay.
I think the, the question is, do we always want to, do we want to commit to allowing participation in study sessions always? And I think I'm.
Public participation, right?
Pardon me?
You're talking about public participation, right?
Yes.
Yeah, right.
But a, a clarifying point on vocabulary. When you say participation, do you mean like speaking or do you mean being able to observe speaking? Okay. Thank you.
Number eight is, I think, this on the back side.
Oh, it is, uh, yeah, we're getting to that.
I mean, I would say the answer is yes, if we're able to also allow participation online. But if we're not. Counselor Panamara?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need, um, studies. People can, people can comment regularly. I think study sessions are about learning.
And I want to make a distinction that, uh, our, um, I don't know if it's in our council rules or in the charter, but somewhere in our rules, it does say that the, the, the council has the right or council has the authority to allow any, anybody to join the council on the dais. And that's happened, I've seen that happen where it was a former city attorney that was in the audience and the di, and the coun, the council invited them up to the dais to participate. And they were actually participants of the study session as opposed to taking public speakers heard. There's a distinction between those two. So I think what we're asking, um, about is speakers heard. And that would not forfeit our right to invite somebody to the dais.
Right.
Okay. Counselor Byers?
I would say that the public has the opportunity to speak to whatever they've heard in the study session, even if it's not on the agenda, during speakers heard on non-agenda items.
Good point.
So in order to expedite a study session, which often we are exceeding the time that's allotted for it without anyone speaking except for us. We talk a lot. There's, there's still time for people to say something. It's just in the meeting.
Great point. Counselor Panamara?
And I just want to keep in mind that people can share their opinions with the council via email anytime they want.
Right.
There's always that ability to make residents make their opinions known to the council.
And it, yeah, creating a participation, creating a speakers heard on non-agenda item on a study session would actually be a new practice.
Yeah.
So. Okay.
Counselor Perry, I'm all. I think I'm okay, actually. I just, I don't want us to feel like we have to change anything with study sessions unless it's required by the law. Yeah. So, and I think that's what I've heard.
I think we're, do you have what you need for that?
I do.
Okay, very good. And I think we have time for another item.
The, the next three items are in regard to commission meetings. And I do want to bring back at some time later after we finish this and hopefully not too distant future, some discussion about commission in general, some commission procedures that need to get ironed out and clarified for everybody. So I don't know whether we should bring these up right now or not, but I'd be happy to move on to the number one on page two. When I see.
Yeah, Counselor Byers?
Well, I, I feel like we've been looking at bringing back the uh, committee commission summits. And this might actually be a really great point to touch on in that first summit on the fifth Wednesday of the month, of which the next one coming up is in May. Perhaps it would be helpful to even email these ahead of time to the chairs of the committees and commissions just to disseminate for folks to be thinking about, even if there's no discussion in those committee or commission meetings. At least it can be percolating for folks in preparation.
Sound good?
Yeah.
Can you work with that?
And I will, uh, very quickly on, on the item number one. Uh, I, I, I believe with Hector's expertise, we now can assure that our commission meetings that allow in-person participation from the public to have online participation. And, and it can work fairly well. We've got some commissions who are resisting that a little bit because it impedes a little bit the, the committee meeting, but we, we do need to have a, a session with the commissions, say, these, these are the, the things you need to be thinking about and the rules, particularly the open meetings rules that you need to be following because we've got some, some varying compliance going on right now.
Counselor Panamara?
Online compliance, does that, uh, and does that mean it has to be, uh, visual as well as audio?
No, it can be just audio.
Okay. Cause that's easier.
Yes, much easier.
All right.
Do you want to go on or do you want to?
Let's carry on. I'd like to stop at like, you know, I mean, four or five minutes from now, just so we can give her a couple minute break.
Okay.
Can I, can I bring something up? Yeah. So, um, I, at some point in time, we're going to, uh, go through the order of business, I would imagine, right? If you want to do some additions or, I want to first of all, say thank you to staff for adding in the language about, um, the council reserving their right to add something to an agenda. I just would ask that we pull the language, pull some language from the ORS, ORS itself. And, um, OR, it's ORS 192.640. Um, and I, I think the, um, the, the, the last sentence that says notice shall be, uh, include a list of principal subjects anticipated to be considered at the meeting, but the requirement shall not limit the ability of the governing body to consider additional subjects. So I think some of that language, so that we can just specifically reference the ORS that, that provides for that, that creates that provision, uh, might help folks, uh, with some clarity about that. Yeah.
Okay.
And again, it's 192.640. Any, maybe what I'll do is open it up to council for there are any questions and then we'll close it.
Okay.
Unless you have something that you, that you want to get to.
No.
Okay. So are there any further questions on this item? Does anybody have anything that they want to add to the discussion? That went over like a ton of bricks. Do you have, do you have anything else, Dave, that you want to get to? We still have seven minutes, so.
I'm, I guess I'm, uh, not fully prepared to go on.
Okay, that sounds like, that's fine. So we're going to go ahead and take a break then. Um, thank you, Dave. This has been really fruitful and really, what, I wanted to say that we went through this a couple of years ago and here's what I like about this process. This, this document to prepare us for questions and answers, um, is saving us a bunch of time. It's way efficient. And I, I think it was the 10-year project, the last time we went through this and it was painful. So, um, it, it may, I, I know, uh, it's been, uh, a little sluggish here now, but not nearly like the last process. And, and you're really, uh, creating some good efficiency for us and we're really grateful for that.
Excellent.
All right.
Well, I think next time we can make a lot of progress, uh, through the rules themselves.
That's great. All right. So if there's no other questions, I'm going to go ahead and, uh, adjourn this meeting at 5:39 and we will convene council, uh, excuse me, 6:49, um, 6:39 and we'll convene council at 6:45. Is that, um?